So I want to welcome everybody. I'm Mrs. Kunkel. I'm the principal at Hepburn Primary School. You'll see a picture of our building hopefully on my screen. Can you see my screen, Mr. Fazn, Mr. Sinas? All right. Thank you. This was our lovely staff at Hepburn last year. This was our send off. So a lot of what we do at Hepburn, we do as a family. So I want to thank our staff. We have several staff members on this evening also tuning in. So thank you to our teachers and staff members that help support our school and our students and our families. What I want to talk about tonight are just some different things of how we're opening our school. And the first thing I want to talk about is we're opening in a hybrid model, which is two days face to face of school. It's in person and remote learning. And when you're remote learning for those three days, you may have recorded lessons, live stream lessons. You should have received a letter from me, excuse me, last week or early this week, with your schedule to let you know if you were an A or B, if you're in the hybrid model, also with the calendar, and I'll show you the calendar on the next slide. One important point that I'd like to make is if you're sick on a hybrid schedule and you're at home and you can't log in and complete your work, please note that attendance does matter still, that we ask you to submit a note and you can do that via email. And we'll have that information of who you can email to send those notes in to count your child as a sick day. This is the school calendar that I referenced. I just want to point out the first couple of weeks of school look a little different because we're starting on a B day. It's a Tuesday. So it and A will be Wednesday, Friday, B is Tuesday, Thursday. And that's for the first two weeks of school with Labor Day being on the seventh. And then we'll finally get into the rotation by the 14th where A will be on a Monday, Wednesday, and B on a Tuesday, Thursday. If you notice, our school calendar is set up till December. But the way our health and safety plan is it could change. We could either go fully remotely depending on the cases, or we could come back all five days a week. So this may be changing and fluid. So we did not want to put a whole school year out there for you. But we will be reevaluating the situation and our community needs and how we are dealing with COVID-19. The other option that parents have had, and you should have received information if you're a remote learning, one of the things that I want to stress is feel really proud of our school district because remote learning model, it's our teachers, our curriculum, our program, our pace. So you're online with us and connected to our school district five days a week with the same content. And what's happening is it's planned instruction. And so it's all going to be new. In the spring, we had review and enrichment, and we did not teach new content. This is new content. It's at our pace. The teachers were working together to co-plan those lessons so that way that we can tightly align. If you're a remote student and you come back into the building, you'll be in line with the curriculum where we stand. There's a couple of things that I would like to share with the remote parents. I know I have a few remote parents on this evening. We're asking you to commit to at least one nine weeks. And if if your child's struggling with the five days remote, please feel free, reach out to me. And we'll try to meet and figure out solutions or possibly even return them to the hybrid model if we need to sooner. One thing that I would like to share is if you're remote and Hepburn is full and you decide to come back, it may not be your homeschool that you would be assigned to. We would work really hard to try to get you back into your homeschool. But if there isn't an open seat, you may have to go to one of the other primary schools. But you can switch back to the hybrid model. And attendance does count in those five days remote. So I talked about the hybrid. Students will be getting Chromebooks in both scenarios, in the hybrid and the remote. And this is a picture similar to the Chromebooks. I saw the Chromebooks here in the building already. They are a light gray in color. But what I want to share is the district will be offering you a technology packet of information and agreement. And also, one of the nice features that we're offering, if you'd like to purchase, is the insurance on the Chromebook and how I understand it, and it'll be spelled out more in your packet. But if you purchase the Chromebook and you get free lunch, it would be $5 for the year. If you get reduced lunch, it's $10. And if you're paid lunch, it's $20 for the year. And what that covers, it's like a cost sharing. If you, if your child would crack their screen maybe the first time, it would repair that screen. If it's a second offense, it'll, they would have to do a cost sharing with you. And that's all spelled out in that agreement and information that you'll see from our technology director, Mr. Loveland. But I did want to share that out, that that option is there for you. If something were to happen to the Chromebook and you didn't have the insurance, that's also in the plan of how that would be addressed. Schoology, you see the little acronym here. I have that on the next page as well. What is that? You're going to hear that. Last year, our teachers did a great job with Class Dojo. Schoology is to me an upgraded version of Class Dojo. Schoology is going to be our learning management system where we have all of our content, all of our communication, all of our curriculum, our teachers, our curriculum, our pace going into Schoology. One thing I do want to share with parents, if you want to, you can already download the app. But you will not be able to enroll your students until you get that information from the teacher. But I do have the app on my phone and it is similar to Dojo, and I can communicate with the teacher that way as well. So I just wanted you to see that symbol there so you know what it looks like, and you'll be seeing information come home with your child's teacher. Student Services and Health Services, something that I ask, it's homework for home, I guess I would say, is before sending your school, your child to school every day, please take their temperature. If they have a fever of 100.4 without medication, please do not send them to school. And please do not return them until they're fever free for 24 hours without medication. And when in doubt, please keep them home. I'm going to show you where all of this is found on our school district page before the end of tonight, so you can see that. I also want to share with you is if you're a hybrid student and you will be getting a packet that looks similar to what I'm showing right here. Inside the packet, every family will get a digital thermometer and instructions on how to use the thermometer as well as information about what to do if your child's sick. So all of that will be coming home with your hybrid student on their first day. So parents, please, they're sending them home with the youngest child. They are in a bubble wrap packet. Please be looking for their thermometer and their information. If your child is sick, please just return them with a note. And no, a doctor's excuse is not required for that. But we do have instances where child, where doctor's notes in our attendance policy would be required. So if you're just keeping home home because they have a fever, we're asking you to do so. Please just write a note. You can write it for when they do return. Or you can email us at our attendance secretary, and we'll share that information with you in your first day packets. Just to talk a little bit about our building and the morning routine. Being hybrid, I'm hopeful that it'll keep our traffic flow moving in the front of our building. We are about half of the student population is bus riders and half is parent drop off. We have no walkers to our building. So we'll talk about what that looks like if you are dropping your child off. Again, please, please, please take your temperature, your child's temperature, get in those routines of taking their temperature and screening them at home prior to coming to school or getting into your car or getting on the bus. If you're a car rider, parents, please do not exit your vehicles. Please do not park. We're going to line our front loop, and I'll show a picture from Google Map of the front of our building and show you where to line up your cars. You may line up and stay until the bell rings. Please have your child at 8:50 put their mask or face covering on and then exit the building on the curb side. So that would be either the passenger side or the passenger rear side. All students should be on the curb side. Please send them right into our main office door. We'll have staff, especially the first day for our new students, helping them find their way to their classrooms. We're also asking that, please do not stay in the parking lot and wait till they go into the door. We will back up 9:73. So we do have parents and we'll have people moving cars pretty quickly in our front loop. The doors will open at 8:50. We're asking you to stay in your cars till that bell rings. There will be no congregating out front of the building like we have in the past. So at 8:50, please have your child exit. You'll hear the bell and have them walk, maintaining social distance from other students. And they'll, instead of going for breakfast, they'll report right to their homerooms. And they'll have breakfast and lunch in their classrooms. And like I said, we'll have staff in the hallways to help them get to their rooms. So this is an aerial of Hepburn. This is 9:73. And either direction that you come up 9:73, this back area is for buses only. Please do not drive back here, parents. Please do not walk back here. This is for buses only. So we ask that when you drive in to drop off your student or pick up, you're going to come into this front loop, go all the way around, and we're going to start parking here and letting the students walk around and into the building as we fill this sidewalk. If you arrive to the building and this front loop is parked full, we ask that you just go to our side parking lot and wait. Our security hopefully will be here. If not, I will be here, our staff members directing you when to cross safely to get into that loop. But we want it to be as safe as possible. And once again, please have your child exit on the passenger side instead of on the driving side. And what that happens is if a parent were to pull out and go around, we did not want a student to get hurt. So students should always, always, always exit on the passenger side, either the front or the rear. The afternoon procedures, we are going to do the same as before. We'll have our cones out on the sidewalk. Please stay behind the cones. Please also try to arrive at your scheduled time for parent pickup. And we'll release a child when we see the parent. We're also asking that you have your mask on while you're on the sidewalks at dismissal. And you can see the times are a little bit bumped up from last year to help kind of social distance our students as well for parent pickup. So we'll have kindergarten at 3:15, first grade at 3:20, 3:25 for second grade, and 3:30 for third grade. I had talked about putting them together, but I'm going to keep them separate to keep them moving. Buses will be on the intercom. We will no longer hold the buses and dismiss all buses at once. So please encourage your student to listen to the bus calling. I know we'll encourage the teachers as well to make sure. And that's due to social distancing, so they're not all in the hallway at the same time. So as the buses arrive, we'll be calling them and they'll be dismissing to the buses. Students will have to wear a face covering or mask while they're on a bus. And we will be filling the buses from the front to the back. And then when they get off the buses, they'll go in from the front to the back to get off of the buses. Resources that you have as a parent and for families is on our WASD page. And I actually want to take you there in just a minute. But I want to show you, it's under the COVID-19 fall information. A lot of questions, and I know there's some in the chat. I haven't been able to see them. I'm sharing. I'm actually going to stop sharing for a minute. And I need to shrink this a minute.
Keep going, Mrs. Kunkel. We're good. We got lots of things. We've got some things answered and we're good.
Okay, well, I'm trying to open up here. Here we go.
The only one, you want to wait for questions at the end? Because I do have one that I could not answer.
Yep, I'll answer it at the end. Thank you, Mr. Fazn.
All right.
And we'll review those. So I'd like to go to our district page. There's a lot, a lot of questions that I heard on some of the other schools in the districts. People asking questions about lunch and breakfast and what that looks like if I'm a hybrid and can I get lunch? Can I get breakfast? Just know that this site has our whole health and safety plan right here for you. You can look at that. This is the hybrid information, remote learning, special education, students' information, frequently asked questions. It is updated from questions that we're getting. There's specifically K to six questions that are great. One of the things, you know, I, as a parent myself of three children, my children have their own devices with going remote in the spring. They have their own devices. Can they bring them to school? I'm sorry, the answer is no. They have to use a school district device. And then if they want to use your devices at home, they're more than able to do so. But there's a lot of information on here. The hybrid schedule has been set up by last name. A to K, L to Z. If there had to be a switch due to siblings having different last names, we did our best to accommodate them. And I know I reached out to a few families, Mr. Fazn. We share families. We communicated together. If you are one of those families that we may have missed, we do make mistakes, please reach out to us. And we'll make sure that they are coordinated on the right day.
I make mistakes. Mrs. Kunkel doesn't make those mistakes.
Yes, I do. Elementary students will be social distancing while in the classroom. And yes, even at six feet apart, this is new to us as early as this week. They will have to wear a mask or a face covering in school. But we will have fresh air breaks for them to have time where they can take their mask off. So I wanted to show this site to you. Some of the questions that I have been receiving this week was about bus information. You haven't received bus information. Yes, we know that. That should be coming out to you very shortly in the mail. I did receive word today that it is being mailed out tomorrow from our district office. So look for that letter. It's Friday tomorrow, so possibly Saturday or Monday or Tuesday. If you do not have it by Tuesday at the latest, please reach out to me and hopefully I can help you. This is a big one. I'd like to encourage you. Our water fountains will not be used. We will have water bottle filling stations in the building for children to fill their water bottles. Please send your child with a water bottle. I suggest maybe an anti-spill water bottle that they can fill with a larger mouth opening at the water station. Sometimes when you use a regular smaller water bottle with a small top, they may have trouble filling those. So those types of things. But I wanted to let you know that this is a very valuable resource for you on our district page that they keep updating. One of the biggest questions that I keep getting is, can I come into the school on the first day? I'm sorry, I know I'm a kindergarten parent as well. We cannot do that this year due to the social distancing. That's why I will have staff willing and able to help and help children get to the right place. One thing, if you know that your child may be somebody, especially kindergarten students or new to the building, it may be helpful for them to even have a little note card or a sticker to say what their name is and who their teacher is so we can help them get there. With my little kindergartner, Tessa, I keep telling her, if you get lost, just ask a grown up. You know, we're practicing, you know, I'm kindergarten. This is my name. We want to make it seamless for them as well. But volunteers, we have an awesome PTO. Our PTO purchased for every student and teacher. Gators for our students and staff. They would wear them around their neck. They can pull them up. They're yours to keep. When they arrive, we'll make sure that each student and staff get one. But a face covering of your own, if you have one, they can wear them. I have different styles that I wear. The first day, when kids see me, I will probably be in something like this so they can see my face. And this is a face shield was also counts as a face covering. So please, you know, if they're new or kindergarten, please ask them to reach out to an adult if they need help getting to a classroom. But I will be out front. Mr. Herb, our counselor, will be out at buses and will have other staff member assigned to different areas of the school to help the new students get to their classrooms. But as I was saying, our PTO is always looking for help. They're looking for different kinds of help this year. And I think Mrs. Swift might be on this evening. She's our PTO president. And they have a Facebook page. Please reach out to them. They're always looking for donations and help. And they're looking at creative ways to help our students and staff this year. So right now, volunteers in the building. Unfortunately, we cannot have the volunteers into the building. So also on here, what I wanted to show is the different things that are under hybrid, the calendar's there if you lose it. So you can always go to our district page and find it. And it also talks about Schoology. Same thing, there's information about remote. What about remote 4K to six? What is Schoology? And there's more and more information. Tonight's meeting, we're going to archive it and put it right here for parents. And like I said, I will also put it on our Facebook page. I'm going to stop sharing. Sorry, I have to keep going between screens. And one important piece is if you ever have a question, please do not hesitate to reach out to me here at the school. This is the number. If you leave a voicemail, if it's after hours, I will get back to you as soon as I can. You can always email me, and I will do my best to get back to you and have an answer for you. If I don't have an answer for you, I will get to the bottom of it and get an answer for you. The two sites that I have here is our Hepburn Facebook page. We use that a lot during the year to communicate, and the PTO page as well. And I know that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. I'm going to stop sharing. And Mr. Fazn or Mr. DeSantis, questions that need answered?
Well, I think we got a lot of them answered, Mrs. Kunkel. One of them was, will devices go back and forth at the primary schools?
Yes, devices will go back and forth in the primary school. It will be a little bit slower probably in the beginning as we're teaching the devices. Also, parents looking in that first day packet of information when they're in school. I know you get a lot of information. Please look for that technology agreement so that way they can get the device. We will need a signature to get the devices to you. But if you were a parent with us in the, in the spring, you know that we had to shut down on Friday, March 13th, and then we didn't come back. So kids will be expected to carry their Chromebooks to and from school safely. And they need to be using them on their off days as well as when they're in person. So there are three remote days and there are two in-person days.
Mrs. Kunkel, do you want to talk about signing in and just for attendance wise, when it comes to signing in and doing work at the same time?
So if your child is homesick and they're not able to do work while they're home in hybrid, please, you'll submit a note. You can send it with, to school with your child when they are returning to school. They will be screened at the nurse's station as well if they've been out and missed a few days. But please send a parent note in. I did see here that somebody asked about a doctor's note after 10. We will have new guidance set to you about attendance. It's a little bit more lenient this year. We are asking parents to keep their kids home if they're sick. So there are some, some new guidance due to COVID-19 that we are sending home to you in relationship to attendance. If a child is sent home by us, and there's some protocol listed on our student services, question and answer, facts and questions. Sometimes there is a doctor's excuse required in certain situations. So the best thing to do is if, if you're somebody that is out and you don't know what to do, give us a call and we'll help you through that. A lot of times it'll say, call your building principal. Please know that I will be here to answer those questions in those cases so that way I can talk to you about what's happening in that situation.
Mrs. Kunkel, do you want to talk about your virtual open houses that you're going to have?
On, just like we have had in the past, the 27th, we'll have virtual open houses with our teachers. That information I sent home in our letter. There will be a link that's there in the letter. You'll click on the link and I will have how you get onto each of the teacher Zoom meetings and scheduled open houses for you that evening. And I just want to look here to make sure I give you the right time. We're looking at kindergarten across the district at 5:15 to 5:45 for that open house on the 27th in grades one to three. There'll be two opportunities, 5:45 to 6:05 and 6:05 to 6:25.
Mrs. Kunkel, there was, there was a talk about masks being at our gym in recess. I told them, yes, they'll have some times for some mask breaks when they eat. There was also a question about shields, coverings. Shields are okay, I told them.
It covers, there's some specific guidance out there where it has to cover the nose and mouth. So this passes as a face covering. This will pass as a face covering over my nose and mouth. And there's different styles. I have my Williamsport one. And the Gator, I do not have a district one yet. But a Gator looks similar to this where you put it around your neck and it can come up over your mouth and nose and then pull it down.
So there's What was the kind of Chromebook students have been purchased? Do you remember? It's on my PowerPoint. I'll look. You keep talking. There's also want to know if earplugs will be, or earphones will be. No, forget it. That's Mrs. Clark being sarcastic. All right. So let me try to find out.
We have headphones for the students. Mrs. Wiley has purchased them for all of our students, but they are to stay in the building with the teachers here. And they belong to each of the students while they're in their classroom. So they'll have headphones. My own children, they personally like earbuds, but at school, they'll have to use what the school provides. And then at home, they'll use their earbuds. So we know that they may be playing different things at different times that would be distracting. So yes, we purchased headphones through Mrs. Wiley. So they'll be available to our students.
It's a question that will hybrid students need to be online during normal school hours on the days they work from home?
Well, the beauty of the hybrid model and the way that we have it set it up, as you saw, I had recording lessons and live lessons. A teacher may ask you to be on at a certain time and record that lesson. So if they can't join, they can watch it later. We have a new system called Go Guardian in our school district. So that way we can monitor as well when the students complete those activities. So attendance will count while they're remote, and it's not just logging in, it's a completion of assignment.
I want to answer, Mrs. Swift, quick. Mrs. Swift, I don't know, I don't have the exact size of the Chromebook or what kind. I do know they're, they're, they're smaller than a typical laptop. They're not real, they're not normal Mac laptops. They are a little smaller. So when you go to purchase something for that, it's not as big.
And so what's different between our intermediate and our primary Chromebooks is our K3 Chromebooks are, it's a Chromebook and it's a touchscreen. So it'll be helpful for our students. And in my PowerPoint, you could see it's kind of convertible. I need to play around with one, but I can also get back to you, Mrs. Swift, and let you know what size and, and make of it as well. But one of the things we heard, especially for our younger students, is that touchscreen capability for them to be able to touch the screen and touch certain programs and also having that keyboard there for them as well. Are there other, other questions? I can't hear you, Mr. Fazn.
Sorry. Sorry. There was a question about headphones being purchased for kids. Yes, there'll be headphones. I also, Mrs. Kunkel, want to say, to answer the Chromebook question, if you go to Jackson's website and look at Mr. Ellis's presentation, he actually describes the Chromebook on his presentation.
And I have them here in the building, so I can also get that to you, Mrs. Swift. If you have questions and you didn't think of them, If you have questions and you didn't think of them tonight, um, like I said, please email me, call me here at the school, um, that's what we're here for. Um, hopefully, um, tonight gave you some resources and some places to go to look to answer some of those frequently asked questions. Um, we do ask for some grace this year, um, it is, um, a new experience for a lot of us. And we do have the best interest of our students and our staff in mind. Um, and will we make mistakes? Sure, um, please call us. Um, we want to make sure that, um, we are doing the best that we can for our students and giving them the best education possible, um, that we can provide. Um, one of the things I, you know, I love about Hepburn is the family support that we get. Um, the parents have always been very supportive, so please, if there's something that you're not sure of, do not, do not hesitate to reach out and to call. Um, there was a planned family vacation question, you'll have to fill out the same form as in the past, um, fill that out to get those days approved.
Mrs. Kunkel, there was a question about when families would know who they're online, for total remote learners who they're online, teachers would be, I, I don't, no, I haven't heard that.
Um, I, in my letter, um, sent home is class postings will be posted on Monday, the twenty-fourth on the building door. Um, lists are changing daily, um, so right now, my plan is to have them posted, hopefully by nine AM on Monday. Um, I can't guarantee nine AM, um, I was still changing class lists here this evening as I was getting new enrollees, um, in the building. But please know, um, that the goal is to have even the remote students, um, posted on the door. I do ask families, when you do come, um, in the past, we haven't always been as busy. Um, but if there are more people here, please make sure you're respectful, um, and wear your mask and say six feet a distance away. Um, I will have cones, um, out, um, marking the six feet distance where you can wait, um, till that person is done. It's a very exciting time, I know, I see students come as soon as they're posted, getting pictures and seeing who their teacher is, so. Again, please, um, if, make sure that you're wearing your mask, um, and be respectful of the six feet. Um, from others if you're waiting to look who your child, children's teacher may be on Monday. Bus information, like I shared earlier, the plan is to have that mailed out, um, from our district office tomorrow. If you're a remote student, um, you'll also get information from our school district, from our central office. On how you will pick up your device and your curriculum materials, um, where to go and when to pick them up. Um, I know that has not been mailed out as of yet, they're working on that for you. Mrs. Heller, you asked about insurance, that information will be in our technology packet, um, I had the breakdown in this slide. Um, depending on your free reduced or full paid lunch, um, that is offered, um, to families if they'd like the insurance on the Chromebook. Um, and it will, it'll describe in that packet, um, the information of cost sharing and what that covers. I'm trying to slide down. Library books, um, library books will still be available for students to pick out, but not go to the library, like Mr. Fazan said. Um, we do have systems in place where they can be delivered to their classrooms. Um, in our younger grades, our librarian will have them on a cart and a book bin and they will pick out their library books that way. Um, we do understand that the rotation of library books will not be as frequent as in the past. Um, so they will be able to, depending on their grade level, pick out more books than what they have. And also, we have a great program that we were able to use, um, in the spring called Epic. Um, that will also give the students, um, availability to online books as well. Um, the, the working families in hybrid and remote, there is flexibility, um, in that. So if they didn't get on during the day, they would need to get on in the evening and complete the work, um, and assignments in the evening.
That's all the questions I have, Mrs. Mrs. Kunkel, from the, the, they did a great job asking some great questions.
I want to thank everybody, um, thank you to my panelists for helping field those questions in the side, um, to the families and teachers, thank you. Um, for joining us tonight, I know your time is valuable, um, I'm excited to see the kids again, I know what have, but I've seen some. Um, out in the community, um, it's always a good time to see them. If you were here in the spring, it was a bit emotional that last day of our parade. Um, I've missed your, your children, um, and I'm excited to see them here this fall. So I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight and again, please do not hesitate to reach out for questions. Have a great night and thank you again, Mr. Fazan and Mr. DeSantis.
Great job, see you everybody, have a great night.